This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, June 10th. It's truly a great night when we get to recognize those receiving tenure and committing to the kids in our community. So we're excited to be here even though some of us aren't excited to be actually sitting on a stage. So I'll just say that. This meeting is called to order. We'll first do an approval of tonight's agenda. You all have had a chance to read it. Do you have any edits or corrections to the agenda? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Karen, I think?
Seconded.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor? Next up is the approval of minutes from May 27th. Any comments, changes, or edits to those minutes? Motion to approve the May 27th minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Susan?
Seconded.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor? As noted, we are doing tenure approvals and awards tonight. Very exciting. There's two items on the agenda. Agenda item four is a listing of all the names. I will put those forward for your approval. And then the next item is each Dr. McGowan will call up individually over to this podium over here for the award recipients. And Dr. Lee and I will stand over with them as Kevin reads a description for each of them. So with regards to agenda item four, you have a listing of a number of names here receiving tenure. Motion to approve the names as listed. Moved by Carrie Lynn?
Seconded.
Seconded by Karen. All those in favor? I'll now turn it over to Dr. McGowan as Dr. Lee and I get up and move down here.
Thank you. So just a quick reminder, first of all, welcome to all the family and friends. We're so happy that you could join us. I think before I go any further, what I would ask is if you are the child of somebody who is receiving tenure tonight, could you please stand up? Just stand up quick. Trust me, you don't have to do any Cal stunts. So that's our quick way of thanking you for all that you have given for your family member to give to the children of this community. So thank you for that because it's quite a night to be proud of them. As we often remind people, tenure is a commitment to the individual for a very, very long time, presumably for the rest of their career, asking them to join us and to continue to join us to do the great work that they've done based on their performance so far. And it's quite an honor in the academic area for one to be appointed to a tenure appointment. Again, recognizing their great contribution, but committing for the long term. So what I'll do is I will say the name of the person and ask them to come up on this side of the stage. This is our warm-up Dr. Hall for graduation, so you'll have to critique this. Come up on this side of the stage, walk across to Dr. Lee and to Mr. Davis. I will, when you get there, I will read some words about you and your work thus far. And then I will finish by essentially saying, and that is why we are recommending this person for tenure. We will clap for each person, jump up and down, hoot, holler, whatever you would like to do. And you'll be presented with a certificate. And then just pause for a second before you walk down to be congratulated by Dr. Rio and Mrs. Bagnola for a picture underneath the broom right there. As you're taking the picture, I'm going to call the name of the next person because I know some people are thinking, oh my goodness, this is going to take all night. We'll be as efficient as possible, but we also really would like people to have their moment because it's a very special one in people's careers. So as much as we'd like to be efficient, we want to recognize them too. And then in case you're worried about being locked in this room forever, we'll pause after all of these and give people an opportunity to go out and finish off the cookies and the cheese and everything else that is out there while we continue the meeting unless you are compelled to stay for the rest of the meeting, which you're more than welcome to do. I'd say exit, but it's up to you. All right. The first person we'd like to call up, please, is Ashley Edwards. Ashley will be followed by Laura Anderson. Laura, if you want to start to prepare yourself. It is an absolute honor to recognize Ms. Ashley Edwards for her tenure as an assistant principal, a passionate and committed educational leader whose presence has enriched both Brighton High School and 12 Corners Middle School. Ashley earned her Bachelor of Arts in History from SUNY Geneseo, her Master of Arts in Teaching Social Studies from Binghamton University, and her Certificate of Advanced Study in School Administration from the University of Rochester. She began her career teaching social studies in Victor and Fairport before joining Brighton High School as an assistant principal, a role she held for three years before transitioning to TCMS in 2024-25. Her journey reflects an impressive blend of instructional grounding, leadership growth, and deep dedication to student-centered administration. At Brighton High School, Ashley was widely respected for integrity, collaboration, and care. Dr. Hall described her as extremely hardworking, a contributing member, and problem solver, compassionate when it comes to working with kids and families, respected by her colleagues. She brought the same energy to TCMS where she works directly with seventh graders, building developmentally appropriate systems of support. She's gone out of her way to understand the unique needs of middle schoolers, forming trusting relationships with students and families alike. She blends clarity, directness, and empathy, establishing herself as a leader who listens, learns, and leads with heart. Ashley's contributions extend across multiple domains, supervising teachers of seventh grade, supporting the social studies and special education departments, coordinating extracurricular activities, and overseeing state testing logistics. Her attention to detail, commitment to inclusion, and advocacy for student success are evident in every aspect of her work. She has learned the nuances of special education law with humility and urgency and ensures students receive the services they need no matter what the challenge. Ashley is organized, reflective, and tirelessly focused on growth. For student staff and herself, we are proud to recommend her for tenure and grateful for the leadership she brings to Brighton each and every day. Emily Crozey, if you want to come close. And can you please welcome Laura Anderson? We proudly recognize Ms. Laura Anderson for tenure, a gifted and experienced music educator whose impact at French Road Elementary School has been as powerful as it has been joyful. Laura joined Brighton with over 17 years of teaching experience in Illinois and through local long-term substitute roles. Her extensive background paired with her passion for vocal performance has brought depth and warmth to the FRES General Music and Vocal Studies programs. Her teaching is grounded in thoughtful planning, developmental understanding, and a commitment to engaging all learners. Laura's classroom is filled with structured exploration, blending interactive instruction with creative expression and musical growth. Her students feel valued, seen, and celebrated as they build musical literacy, vocal strength, and personal confidence. Laura is not only a dedicated instructor, but also an active participant in professional learning and a contributor to curriculum development through transfer goal and scope and sequence work. She is a respected leader within our department and a steadfast presence at concerts, rehearsals, and district-wide performances. Her colleague, David Myers, beautifully captured Laura's spirit by noting, "She sweats the right details and lets the right ones slide." This is a rare skill. Laura sees both the big picture and the small adjustments that bring that vision to life. Her kindness, insight, and collaborative nature make her a beloved colleague and an anchor in our music program. Laura Anderson has brought out the best in our students and staff, and we are honored to recommend her for tenure. Bethany Crips, if you could come close. And if everybody else could welcome Emily Crozey, It is with great pride that we recognize Ms. Emily Crozey for tenure, an outstanding mathematics teacher whose intelligence, empathy, and perseverance have enriched the lives of her students and colleagues alike. Emily began her career under incredibly challenging circumstances, graduating from SUNY Geneseo during the height of the pandemic and immediately stepping into the classroom as students transitioned back to full-time in-person learning. She later earned her Master of Science degree from Nazareth College, demonstrating a commitment to lifelong learning. In those early years, Emily showed tremendous compassion for students grappling with anxiety, disrupted routines, and academic uncertainty. Emily's teaching philosophy is grounded in the belief that students must feel seen and supported in order to thrive academically. She lives the principles of Maslow before Bloom, always tending to the social emotional needs of her students alongside their academic growth. She meets students before school, stays late to review content, and uses every opportunity to build confidence, connection, and trust. In just three years, she has taught every seventh and eighth grade mathematics course at TCMS, a testament to her content expertise and versatility. Her instruction is thoughtful, creative, and focused on helping every student reach their potential. Emily is not only a gifted teacher, but a vital part of our school community. She cheers on student-led events, chaperones games, leads with school spirit, and brings positive energy to every hallway and classroom she enters. As Adrian Forkin beautifully said, Emily's love and enthusiasm for being part of the TCMS community makes it a better place. Her integrity, kindness, and work ethic set a powerful example, and her ability to uplift both students and colleagues make her one of our most treasured team members. We are honored to recommend Emily Crozey for tenure. Claire D. Felice, you'll be up next. Right now, please recognize and welcome to the We are honored to recognize Ms. Bethany Crips for tenure in the Brighton Central School District, a gifted and passionate music educator who has become an essential pillar in our VPA program. Bethany joined us in the 2021-22 school year and brought with her a strong foundation in music education, having served as a year-long substitute in Liverpool and completing her master's degree at SUNY Potsdam. From the outset, Bethany demonstrated a deep understanding of both musical instruction and adolescent development, combining these skills to create engaging, inclusive, and rigorous ensembles. Bethany is known for her extraordinary ability to manage and differentiate instruction in large ensembles, leading a band of over 70 students entirely on her own with confidence, precision, and joy. Her lessons are paced and thoughtfully grounded in a deep understanding of student needs. She builds community with her ensembles, fosters student reflection and goal-setting, and seamlessly integrates both traditional techniques and technology into her instruction. Her participation in NISBA, NISBDA, UBD, UBD institutes, and her leadership in the district's music program evaluation reflect her continuous commitment to her professional growth and to the advancement of our music program. Beyond her musical talent, Bethany is a collaborator, leader, and a friend to all. Her team leader Jenny Moll shared, "Beth is meticulous and thorough in all things, a mentor to all when most new teachers would struggle to find their own feet. She's the first to arrive and the last to leave, chaperoning events, setting up for concerts, and offering support wherever it's needed." Bethany's presence connects people and programs across buildings, and our students thrive because of the care, talent, and dedication that she brings to her work. We are fortunate to have her as a colleague and educator, and it is with deep appreciation and admiration that we recommend Bethany Crips for tenure. Alex Elkins, you'll be up next. But right now, if you could please welcome to the stage It is an honor to recognize Ms. Claire D. Felice for tenure in the Brighton Central School District where she has distinguished herself as an inspiring and accomplished music and band teacher. Claire's love of music, education, and her deep commitment to students are evident in every aspect of her work. She brings passion, positivity, and professionalism to every rehearsal and lesson, making music accessible and meaningful for all learners. Claire's ability to build strong relationships with students, colleagues, and families has enriched our school culture, while her collaborations with institutions like the RPO and Eastman School have broadened students' exposure to authentic, real-world music experiences. In the classroom, Claire creates a joyful, rigorous, and inclusive environment where all students are encouraged to grow. She is an expert at planning instruction for large ensembles, also managing groups of 70-plus students with grace and intention. Her pacing is developmentally appropriate, her expectations are high, and her classroom is adorned with purposeful reference materials that connect students to broader musical concepts and genres. Her students are taught to reflect, self-assess, and set goals, skills that extend far beyond the music room. Her instruction fosters not only musical achievement, but also personal confidence and creativity. Claire's colleagues deeply value her thoughtful demeanor, collaborative spirit, and quiet leadership. Her TCMS team leader Jenny Moll praised her as "a solid, dependable part of our team who brings calm, compassion, and excellence to their work." Jenny noted that Claire's bands are top-notch and that she prepares students with great success for county and regional competitions. Claire's intelligence, kindness, and dedication make her a critical part of our music family, and we are incredibly fortunate for her to have been in our district. It is with great pride that we recommend Claire D. Felice for tenure. And you guessed it, Stephanie Elkins, you're up next. The only thing better than one Elkins is two. Please welcome to the stage Alex Elkins. It is a pleasure and privilege to recognize Mr. Alex Elkins for tenure, an exceptional educator whose innovation, humility, and heart have made a deep impact at 12 Corners Middle School. A Brighton graduate himself, who I literally first met about 15 feet away from here when he was in high school, it's very interesting for me, and was an outstanding student at that time as well. He returned to our district with a profound sense of purpose and commitment. After earning his Bachelor of Science in Technology Education from SUNY Oswego and a Master of Science from Buffalo State College, Alex gained valuable experience teaching in Fairport and Spencerport before joining TCMS. From the moment he arrived, Alex has been a transformative presence revitalizing technology education with an emphasis on creativity, hands-on exploration, and real-world problem solving. Alex's classroom is a place of joy, energy, and empowerment. His meticulously-designed lessons guide students through the design process while encouraging curiosity, independence, and teamwork. He fosters a culture in which students are not only learners but leaders, especially evident in his work on the morning show, where students take ownership and responsibility for producing daily broadcasts that have become a beloved part of school life. His ability to differentiate instruction and scaffold each learner's journey has created equitable access to high-level technology tools and experiences. He is also a staunch advocate for expanding career and tech ed pathways, ensuring that students see themselves as future engineers, designers, and makers. Outside of the classroom, Alex is a generous and dependable colleague, known for mentoring new teachers, leading clubs, and actively contributing to team discussions and initiatives. His colleague and morning show co-advisor Jeremy Tullik captured his spirit perfectly. If someone were to look up the definition of a nice guy, they would see a picture of Alex Elkins. That kindness combined with his high expectations and thoughtful instruction make him an ideal role model for students and staff alike. Alex has elevated our technology program, enriched student life, and helped build a school culture centered on possibility and creativity. It is with great enthusiasm that we recommend Alex for tenure. Lindsay German will be next. Stephanie Elkins, please come up. It is with great admiration and enthusiasm that we recommend Ms. Stephanie Elkins for tenure, a dynamic seventh-grade science teacher at 12 Corners Middle School who brings boundless energy, professionalism, and care to every aspect of her work. Stephanie holds a Bachelor's in Zoology and a Master's in Biology and Special Education from SUNY Oswego. Her diverse experiences include special education, science teaching roles in multiple districts, which she has used to inform her compassionate and rigorous teaching style at TCMS. After initially transitioning into a special education role to support the district's needs, she returned to her passion, science, and has since transformed her classroom into a vibrant space for learning and discovery. Stephanie is known for her high expectations, deep content knowledge, and ability to connect with students of all backgrounds and abilities. Her instructional strategies are creative and inclusive, and her work with students in the ASPIRE program demonstrates her commitment to meeting all learners where they are. She mentors new teachers, designs engaging labs, and leads with confidence and humility. Her Science Department colleagues describe her as invaluable, and her work has had a profound effect on both student achievement and staff development. Outside the classroom, Stephanie's commitment continues. She coaches Montefat Girls Basketball, leads the Science Olympiad and E3 Clubs, and organizes service and tea-billing events that strengthen student connection and pride. One colleague affectionately called her "the Energizer Bunny," reflecting the tireless enthusiasm she brings to school each day. Stephanie Elkins is a model of teacher leadership, student advocacy, and joyful professionalism. It is with great confidence and joy that we recommend her for tenure. Congratulations. Cedric Goodwill, you're next. Please welcome Lindsay German. We are thrilled to recognize Mrs. Lindsay German for tenure, an exceptional speech-language pathologist whose expertise, dedication, and heart have made a profound impact on our students. Lindsay holds both her Bachelor's and Master's degrees in speech pathology from Nazareth University and brought to Brighton experience from Encompass Learning Center and her work as a supervisor at the Nazareth Speech Clinic. Since joining our district, Lindsay has served students at French Road and Brighton High School and currently supports students in both VHS and the Brighton Transition Program at St. John Fisher University. Lindsay is a master at meeting students exactly where they are, whether in a classroom, hallway, office, or out in the community at a job placement. She has developed innovative learning experiences that not only address communication goals, but also promote confidence, independence, and leadership. Her data-driven, transparent communication with teams and families makes her a model of professionalism and collaboration. Lindsay's ability to embed speech services seamlessly into the academic and social fabric of each student's day is remarkable and deeply appreciated by all who work with her. Perhaps most impressive is Lindsay's collaborative nature and her commitment to empowering students. She regularly participates in professional development alongside teachers to integrate support into instruction and design a student-led tour to welcome new transition students, offering current students a chance to lead and shine. As Deanna Bagnola noted, "Lindsay is the spark that inspires others to think creatively and approach challenges in new ways." Her advocacy for students' innovation and service delivery and spirit of inclusion make her an irreplaceable part of our community. We are so very proud to recommend Lindsay German for tenure. Kristin Hahey, you'll be next. But first Cedric Goodwill. It is a joy to recognize Mr. Cedric Goodwill for tenure, a dynamic and compassionate physical education teacher who brings energy, care, and professionalism to every interaction. Cedric joined our team with a strong foundation in physical education and a deep belief in the importance of movement, teamwork, and personal growth. Whether teaching warm-ups, coordinating creative games, or offering encouragement from the sidelines, Cedric creates an environment where every student feels seen, capable, and motivated to participate. He is a gifted instructor who turns gym class into a place of learning, laughter, and belonging. Cedric's classes are a model of structure and engagement. He builds clear routines, integrates purposeful activities, and finds joy in every interaction with students. From inventive games like Zombie Tag to skill-building units like lacrosse, Cedric tailors instruction to meet the needs of every learner. He notices when students need extra support and responds immediately, breaking skills into manageable parts and inviting peers to model and reinforce learning. His collaborative teaching style builds confidence, connection, and respect among students. His lessons are not only fun, they are formative. Outside of class, Cedric is a respected coach and mentor whose work in track and field has inspired student athletes to push themselves and support one another. His supervisors, Colleen Coggins and Mark Kress, praised his professionalism and impact, noting his desire to expand his coaching reach and deepen his influence in the school community. Cedric exemplifies the values of collaboration, dedication, and student-first thinking. His presence uplifts our physical education program, strengthens our school climate, and models excellence for all. We are thrilled to recommend Mr. Cedric Goodwill for tenure. Laura Hernandez will be the next one up. After, please welcome Kristin Hahey. It is with deep admiration and gratitude that we recognize Mrs. Kristin Hahey for tenure, a remarkable school counselor at 12 Corners Middle School, whose empathy, insight, and commitment have profoundly impacted our students and our school community. Kristin holds a Bachelor's degree from Brock University and a Master's degree in Counseling Psychology from Trinity Western University. Her professional journey includes roles as a substance abuse prevention counselor at Delphi Rise and work at the Center for Youth, all of which laid the foundation for her strengths in relational, trauma-informed, and student-centered care. Kristin began her time in Brighton as our family navigator and transitioned seamlessly into her counseling role during the challenging return to full-time in-person learning. Kristin's ability to build genuine, trusting relationships with students and families is unparalleled. She is deeply respected as an advocate and confidant who listens with patience, responds with compassion, and offers steady, thoughtful support. Ms. Michelle Peters described her as having "the utmost patience, compassion, and understanding," and as a gift and inspiration to all of her colleagues in the Brighton community. Kristin's influence is particularly strong among students navigating anxiety or life challenges, many of whom seek her out regularly for guidance and reassurance. Beyond her counseling caseload, Kristin is a driving force on the Brighton support team, known for her outside-the-box thinking and commitment to collaborative problem-solving. She brings creativity to every conversation, helping her team develop meaningful interventions that benefit the whole child. Kristin exemplifies the best of what we hope for in student support, professional integrity, a warm and steady presence, and an unwavering belief in every student's potential. It is a privilege to Max Krieger, you'll be up. After, we welcome Laura Hernandez. We proudly recommend Ms. Laura Hernandez for tenure, a dynamic and caring world language educator whose passion for Spanish instruction and student growth is evident in every aspect of her work at Brighton High School. With intentional experience in Spain and a strong teaching foundation from the Penfield Central School District, Laura has brought expertise, heart, and energy to her role. She creates a classroom where all students feel welcome, challenged, and successful, particularly those with special needs, for whom she has designed individualized, supportive language programs that celebrate progress at every level. Laura's classroom is a vibrant, well-organized space where students are actively engaged in reading, writing, speaking, and listening in Spanish. She establishes clear routines and expectations while making learning fun and collaborative. Her positive rapport with students fosters both academic achievement and personal confidence. As Assistant Principal Matt Como said, "Laura has a great sense of humor and brings laughter and fun to her lessons while maintaining high expectations." Her students speak Spanish with fluency and joy, reflecting the depth and effectiveness of her instruction. In addition to her teaching, Laura has taken on key leadership roles in curriculum development, most notably designing dual-credit Spanish courses with MCC and coordinating the World Language Intern Program, which brings international educators into VHS and TCMS. Her leadership strengthens not only the World Language Department, but also our students' global awareness and cultural understanding. Laura is an energetic, joyful, and respected colleague who makes a lasting impact. We are honored to recommend Laura Hernandez for tenure. Megan Legarres will be up after Max Krieger. It is a pleasure to recognize Mr. Max Krieger for tenure, a dynamic, physical education teacher and coach, whose energy, dedication, and leadership have left a lasting impression at Brighton High School. At Council Rock Primary School, I'm sorry. He did go to Brighton High School and had a lasting impact, and Dr. Hall thinks he just recruited him, but no, Council Rock Primary School. Max brings to his work not only a deep knowledge of physical fitness and instruction, but also genuine passion for promoting lifelong wellness and student engagement. He has been a key figure in building excitement and enthusiasm around health movement and school spirit, both inside and outside the gym throughout the district. Max's impact reaches beyond traditional instruction. He has been instrumental in enhancing the visibility and pride of our athletic programs through his creative use of social media and storytelling, helping students feel seen and celebrated for their achievements. His work with both varsity teams and community athletic initiatives have forged stronger ties between the schools and families, reinforcing a shared commitment to student success and well-being. His collaborative relationship with veteran physical education staff has elevated instruction, and his eagerness to bring new ideas keeps our program fresh, inclusive, and exciting. Max is known for his positivity, problem-solving, and approachability. He contributes meaningfully to school morale, supports colleagues in and out of the classroom, and always brings a student-centered lens to his work. As noted in his recommendation, he pushes others' thinking and brings resources and opportunities to the table that elevate everyone's experience. Max is a role model of energy, equity, and excellence, and we are proud to recommend him for tenure. Congratulations.
We are so proud to recommend Megan for tenure, a fifth-grade teacher at French Road Elementary School, whose intentional planning, academic rigor, and joyful learning environment have significantly impacted her students and the school community. Megan holds a bachelor's degree in childhood special education from SUNY Geneseeo and a master's degree in literacy from St. John Fisher College. She has certified in early childhood education, birth-through-grade-two, childhood education grade-one-through-six, students with disabilities, and literacy education. Prior to joining the Brighton community, she taught sixth grade for eight years in Danville, bringing with her a strong foundation in upper elementary instruction and a deep understanding of student development. In her classroom, Megan builds learning experiences rooted in structure, clarity, and engagement. Her routines are rich with high expectations and student empowerment. Through strategic planning, Megan weaves executive functioning skills into daily practice, helping students grow in organization, independence, and problem-solving. She differentiates with care, ensuring each child is appropriately challenged and supported. Whether leading a small group through targeted instruction or facilitating peer collaboration on a challenging task, Megan keeps students at the center of her work, always striving to make learning meaningful, accessible, and joyful. Principal Colleen Coggins noted the true balance Megan achieves between academic structure and cooperative exploration, with her classroom often abuzz with productive dialogue and collaboration. Megan's lessons reflect a thoughtful blend of content knowledge, creativity, and innovation. Whether using a novel to explore points of view or guiding students in publishing work through technology-infused platforms, she provides students with voice, choice, and relevance. Her students are not only eager to learn, they are proud to share what they've created. Megan embodies the best of what we value in education, student-centered instruction, instructional excellence, and a classroom community that celebrates thinking, risk-taking, and growth. It is with great confidence and deep appreciation that we recommend her for tenure. Congratulations.
Liz Porter will be after. We welcome Glenn McCarty up to the stage.
We are delighted to recognize Mr. Glenn McCarty for tenure, a gifted English teacher at 12 Corners Middle School, whose energy, creativity, and dedication have transformed learning for students and enriched our school community. Glenn holds a bachelor's degree in secondary English from Houghton College and a master's degree in secondary education from the George Washington University. Prior to teaching, Glenn worked as a journalist. Experience that now animates his writing instruction and brings real-world relevance to his classroom. At TCMS, Glenn has taught both seventh and eighth-grade English and been a key contributor to collaborative curriculum work and unit design, including summer understanding-by-design sessions. Glenn brings literature and writing to life, drawing on his own experience as a published author and infusing his instruction with excitement and authenticity. He encourages student voice, fosters creativity, and provides supportive structured routines that help all students thrive. In the ASPIRE program, Glenn has taken on the challenge of supporting students in crisis with empathy and ingenuity, offering trauma-informed instruction and connection. His Music Wednesdays, experiential field trips, and incorporation of diverse learning modalities have made his classroom a place where students feel seen, heard, and motivated. Glenn's influence extends far beyond the classroom. He directs high school plays, leads the TCMS Drama Club, and brings joyful enthusiasm to all aspects of student life. His mentor, Rob Giles, noted Glenn's boundless energy and willingness to engage in every aspect of school life make him a mentor to both students and colleagues. Glenn is an authentic, dedicated, and inspiring educator whose contributions strengthen our culture of learning and inclusion. We are so proud to recommend Glenn for tenure.
It is a true pleasure to honor Ms. Elizabeth Porter for tenure, a warm, calm, and deeply affectionate, effective, and probably affectionate, second-grade teacher at Council Rock Primary School. Liz holds a bachelor's in elementary education and a master's in literacy, both from SUNY Geneseeo, and brings to her work a beautiful balance of pedagogical strength and relational grace. Since joining our team, she has been known for building strong, trusting relationships with students, especially those with significant challenges, and creating a classroom where every child feels safe, supported, and ready to learn. Liz's classroom is an inclusive and joyful space where learners from all backgrounds and with all needs are empowered to grow. Her partnership with the 1214 Classroom Team has been transformative, as she has created an environment that allows for integration, collaboration, and mutual respect. She excels in building community, not only among her students, but with families as well, offering consistent, caring communication, and meaningful engagement. Beyond the classroom, Liz's leadership has also taken shape in the form of innovation, particularly through the launch of an after-school STEM club, which she co-founded and continues to run. This club has sparked excitement, curiosity, and confidence in students and is a perfect reflection of Liz's belief in hands-on, student-centered learning. Her humility, care, and professionalism enrich our entire school community. We are so very proud to recommend Liz Porter for tenure.
It is a joy to honor Ms. Zoe Quell for tenure, a first-grade teacher at Council Rock Primary School, whose literacy expertise, organizational clarity, and nurturing presence have deeply shaped student growth and school culture. Zoe earned her bachelor's in early childhood, childhood education from SUNY Cortland and her master's in literacy from SUNY Geneseeo. She is a collaborative, reflective practitioner, whose passion for reading development infuses her instruction and inspires both students and colleagues. In the classroom, Zoe creates a calm, structured environment where students thrive. Her routines promote independence, and her instruction fosters focus, investment, and joy in learning. Principal Matt Tappin shared how he has walked by her room and thought it was empty only to discover students completely immersed in their work. That quiet focus is a hallmark of Zoe's teaching and a testament to the trust and clarity she brings to her instruction. Zoe's dedication to collaboration is equally commendable. She contributes insightfully to her grade-level team, aligns instruction thoughtfully with colleagues, and models consistency and care in all interactions. She is a quiet leader who lifts others up and helps students feel successful and safe. Zoe Quell exemplifies excellence in teaching, partnership, and heart. We are so very proud to recommend her for tenure.
It is a privilege to recognize Ms. Katua Reedhead for tenure, a gifted and compassionate school counselor who has become an integral part of the Council Rock Primary School community. Katua earned her Bachelor of Arts in Psychology from Alfred University and her Master's in School Counseling from Brockport University. Before joining Brighton, she supports students and staff in the Honeybee Falls Lima School District, where she helped build counseling services at the primary level. She brought this experience to our district, beginning as a part-time counselor at Council Rock and French Road before becoming a full-time member of the CRPS mental health team. Katua's ability to form strong, trusting relationships with students and families is one of her most remarkable qualities. She approaches every student with empathy and patience, creating a safe and nurturing environment where children feel valued and supported. She has helped countless students navigate emotional, behavioral, and academic challenges with grace and insight. Her work is both responsive and proactive, addressing individual needs while also shaping school-wide support systems through initiatives like classroom SCL implementation and small group counseling. Council Rock Principal Matt Tappin describes Katua as a valued and respected member of the school mental health team, whose approach is rooted in thoughtful leadership and open communication. She confidently and compassionately supports staff, students, and families, helping everyone around her thrive. Her work touches every corner of the school, and her presence is felt by all who have had the privilege to work with her. We are honored to recommend Katua Reedhead for tenure.
It is a true pleasure to recommend Mr. Barry Rogan Moser for tenure, a creative and passionate English teacher at Brighton High School, whose work extends far beyond the classroom. Barry teaches English IX, English X, senior electives, and co-taught integrated classes, reaching a wide range of learners with clarity, energy, and heart. His classroom is a welcoming, safe, and dynamic place where students feel seen, heard, and inspired to think critically. Assistant Principal Mark Lincoln aptly described Barry's classroom as "a place where he puts a lot of heart into his teaching and leverages community to make students feel welcomed and valued." Barry's contributions outside the classroom are extensive. He advises the award-winning Trapezoid newspaper, leads the Class of 2027, coaches varsity girls' soccer, and directs the VHS Speech and Debate Club. His involvement speaks to his passion for building student leadership, amplifying student voice, and fostering community. His work on the school-based Equity Team further highlights his dedication to inclusive, student-centered education. Barry's humor, humility, and professionalism make him a colleague others gravitate toward and rely on. Principal Tom Hall summed it up best: "Barry is an asset to his students, to the English department, and to Brighton High School. His presence elevates both instruction and school culture. Barry is a role model of commitment, positivity, and engagement in every domain, and we are fortunate to have him as a part of our learning community." We are honored to recommend Barry Rogan Moser for tenure.
We are proud to recognize Ms. Stephanie Webster for tenure, a deeply dedicated and creative fifth-grade teacher at French Road Elementary School. Stephanie's path to the classroom is unique. She holds an Associate's Degree in Studio Art and Design, a Bachelor's Degree in Interior Design and Art History, and a Cosmetology License. She later earned her Master's in Childhood Special Education from St. John Fisher and has worked in both special education and general education settings, bringing a multidisciplinary perspective to everything she does. Stephanie's classroom is a vibrant community built on high expectations, strong relationships, and a joyful culture of learning. She seamlessly incorporates district initiatives like Letters, Wit &amp; Wisdom, and Building Thinking classrooms, creating instruction that is rigorous, student-centered, and engaging. Her lessons combine inquiry, student choice, hands-on activities, and technology. Principal Colleen Coggins described one observation in which Stephanie used a math inquiry task involving fractions, guiding students through reciprocal teaching, movement breaks, and celebration, all with the goal of empowering every learner. Stephanie's diverse background, creativity, and instructional excellence contributes to the growth and development of every student she teaches. She brings her whole self to her work, combining academic rigor, artistic sensibility, and compassion. Her students are prepared for the transition to middle school because they've experienced a classroom that values both joy and challenge. Stephanie Webster exemplifies the mission and values of our district, and we are proud to recommend her for tenure.
It is with great pride that we recommend Katherine Wing for tenure, an exceptional special education teacher at French Road Elementary School, whose instructional insight, cultural fluency, and compassionate professionalism have had a profound impact on her students and colleagues alike. Katherine holds a bachelor's degree in inclusive childhood education and intercultural studies from Houghton College and a master's in multidisciplinary studies and exceptional education with a bilingual extension. She has certified in early childhood education, students with disabilities, and bilingual education. Her career began in Ecuador at Alliance Academy International, where she served as a fourth-grade teacher for five years before returning to Rochester and teaching in RCSD for another five years. In her three years at French Road, Katherine has worked in both consultant teaching and integrated co-teaching classrooms across all grade levels. Her ability to balance individualized student support with high expectations for learning make her an ideal instructional partner. Co-teachers consistently praise the sense of true partnership Katherine brings to shared planning and classroom leadership. Her lessons are grounded in data but infused with creativity and joy, encouraging students to take ownership of their learning while feeling fully supported. A recent observation in the resource room perfectly captured Katherine's strength. As one student arrived in emotional distress, she immediately responded with empathy, pausing academic instruction to meet the student's needs before seamlessly transitioning back into a literacy lesson. That lesson, combining road-to-reading strategies with movement, student-led dialogue, and even a B-robotics activity showcased Katherine's mastery of engaging, multisensory education. We are honored to recommend her for tenure. Congratulations.
We are proud to recognize Ms. Tricia Zeller for tenure, an outstanding school counselor whose calm presence, deep care, and unwavering dedication have made a powerful impact at Brighton High School, particularly within the ASPIRE program, our alternative high school setting. Now completing her third year at VHS, Tricia brings a unique combination of warmth, professionalism, and clinical skill to her work. She has a remarkable ability to build relationships with all kinds of learners, especially students who need a supportive, individualized environment to thrive. Dr. Hall praised her as "caring, enthusiastic, talented, and extremely collaborative," highlighting her ability to de-escalate crises and build trust with even the most hesitant learners. Tricia's effectiveness lies not only in her expertise, but in her unwavering belief in each student's capacity for growth. Her students speak often of the trust they place in her, commending her honest, nonjudgmental approach and the motivation she helps them find within themselves. Tricia supports students with mandated counseling services on their IP or 504 plans, facilitates --
counseling services on their IP or 504 plans, facilitates daily community groups for each grade level, and always makes time for drop-in conversations, no matter how busy her schedule may be. Assistant Principal Betsy Paddock, who oversees the ASPIRE program, shared how Trish went out of her way to provide context and insight for every student and family, helping her make meaningful connections quickly as a new leader in the program. Trish is the heart of the ASPIRE counseling team, and her work radiates far beyond the walls of our office. She's an advocate for equity, a resource for colleagues, and a steady guide for students navigating significant challenges. Her presence brings comfort to families, clarity to teams, and confidence to students who may not have believed in themselves before. We are honored to recommend Trish for tenure. Jennifer Scusa, you will follow Rachel Fairman. We are pleased to honor Ms. Rachel Fairman for tenure, an incredibly compassionate, dedicated, and reflective teaching assistant at Council Rock Primary School. Rachel's presence in our school community has been deeply felt, especially by the students she serves with care, insight, and consistency. Her strength lies in her ability to connect with children of all needs and learning profiles, offering them support, structure, and encouragement every step of the way. Rachel has seamlessly taken on a variety of roles during and time at Council Rock, most recently providing vital support in a kindergarten classroom. She works closely with teachers to ensure instruction is accessible and engaging, and constantly evaluates her own practice to grow as an educator. Her collaborative nature and calm, steady demeanor make her a trusted team member in every space that she enters. She is the kind of colleague you can always count on, someone who brings her best to every challenge. Rachel's commitment to her professional growth is also evident in her pursuit of a teaching degree, a path she is clearly well-suited for. Her potential as a future teacher is already visible in her work with students today. Her intuitive understanding of child development, paired with her drive and humility, make her an incredible asset to our district. We are proud to recommend Rachel for tenure and excited for all that lies ahead in our educational journey. Congratulations. Casey Waite, you will follow Jennifer Scusa. It is a pleasure to honor Jennifer for tenure, an incredibly supportive and flexible teaching assistant at French Road Elementary School. Jen's journey began as a teacher's aide in the Churchville Chi High School District before joining Brighton, where she steadily grew into her current role. Now working with multiple programs, including consultant, teaching, PATH, and integrated co-teaching classrooms, Jen supports 3rd grade students across content areas, adapting instruction and offering behavioral support that fosters both academic and emotional growth. In every classroom, Jen builds strong, supportive relationships with students. She is patient and caring and invested in helping students become more independent. Her colleagues describe her as "reliable, helpful, and deeply committed to student success." One teacher, Mrs. Tasto, shared that Jen is always willing to support learners in reading, writing, and math while simultaneously guiding them toward confidence and autonomy. Jen is also committed to professional growth, eagerly participating in learning opportunities that help her better serve students. She is kind, respectful, and always ready to step in, whether in the classroom or at arrival and dismissal, where her presence supports the larger school community. Jennifer Scusa's adaptability, enthusiasm, and dedication make her a vital part of our team, and we are proud to recommend her for tenure. Congratulations. Kathryn Whitman, you will follow Casey Waite. We are proud to recommend Ms. Kathleen Casey Waite for tenure, an outstanding teaching assistant whose impact at Council Rock Primary School is felt deeply by students, staff, and families alike. Casey has a remarkable ability to form strong, meaningful relationships with young learners, using humor, warmth, and insight to build confidence and interdependence. Her presence in the classroom enhances not only the academic progress of students but also their emotional well-being and social development. She is a steady, nurturing, and essential part of the learning environment. Casey is known for her intuitive ability to anticipate classroom needs and support instruction seamlessly. She has grown into a true partner to her teaching colleagues, contributing to a dynamic and responsive classroom culture. Her grasp of the kindergarten curriculum and ability to adapt to meet the diverse needs of her students make her an invaluable team member. She's quick to respond with patience and flexibility, whether guiding a child through a moment of dysregulation or helping a group of students engage more deeply with a lesson. Her presence enhances the quality of learning for every child in the room. Casey has become a deeply trusted and respected part of the Council Rock team. She quickly adapted to the routines and culture of our school and is beloved by students and staff alike. Principal Matt Tappin and Assistant Principal Katie Schaefer praised her for her calm demeanor and creative problem-solving, noting that she meets challenges with humor and patience. Her dedication, growth, and connection with students make her an ideal candidate, and we are so very proud to honor her with tenure. Congratulations. Kathryn Kat Whitman. We are thrilled to recommend Mrs. Kathryn Kat Whitman for tenure, a thoughtful, kind, and dedicated teaching assistant at French Road Elementary School. Kat currently supports students in 4th grade, working across multiple programs, including PATH, 15-1, and consultant teaching models. She is also pursuing a Bachelor's Degree in Childhood Inclusive Multidisciplinary Education at SUNY Brockport, applying her learning directly to her practice and enhancing instruction in meaningful ways. Kat is known for her deep care for students, her ability to build strong relationships, and her willingness to go above and beyond. She consistently asks how she can help, seeks feedback from colleagues, and provides both academic and social-emotional support. Teacher Kristen DeChile, DeChile, describes her as "a bright, positive presence in the classroom every day." Kat is not just a support to students, she is a trusted partner to teachers and an active contributor to the learning environment. Outside of the classroom, Kat is a committed member of the School-Based Equity Team and participates actively in faculty meetings, applying culturally responsive strategies to support all learners. Her reliability, respectfulness, and growth mindset make her a model of professionalism and a role model for students. As she continues to grow with us, we are excited to see the many ways Kat will continue to impact our school community. It is with great enthusiasm that we recommend Kat Women for tenure. I just want to echo that. That sure is your mom, and you ought to be very proud along with everybody else. So that sums it up even better than I could, but I do want to say to everybody, there are many other family members in this room. I know I asked kids to stand before, but I would say there are many partners and significant others in this room in so many ways that have contributed to the great success of these humans that were recognized tonight. Thank you for bearing with long introductions, but it is their moment, and they have earned it, and I'm glad that we could spend a little bit of time recognizing them tonight, and we so look forward to all that they will contribute to our kids for a very long time into the future. Once again, congratulations to all of them.
A couple of quick thank yous on behalf of the entire board. First, to Dr. McGowan for getting through all of those and chugging his water and keeping it up. So our thanks to him.
I was choked up in many ways.
And also, we as a board are grateful for all of you, for your commitment to the kids in this community and the heart and the soul you've put into the work that you do. So on our behalf, thank you very much. I'm going to now present you with a very difficult decision. You can go home and do the things that need to get done at home, or you can stay and listen to some discussions on capital reserves and cellphone policies, and you can vote with your feet. Great way to start a night, so that was awesome. Whenever you're ready, Bill. Are we good? Okay. Move on with the agenda. Next up, we offer the opportunity at every public session for participation, questions, comments, concerns from the audience. Are there any? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next up, we have some business items. First, the approval of the Reserve Fund Plan dated June 30, 2025. I'm one of the three members of the Audit Committee along with Karen and Christina, who've had a chance to review this. All looks good. We had the review with Lou and Dahlia. Any questions from the board with regards to this? Karen or Christina, any other comments you want to make?
I'll just add that I feel very confident that Lou creates the best possible plan for us every year, and it always makes me feel better coming out of budget season to see what's in our reserves and what we have going forward, and I commend him for all of that work.
Thank you. Motion to, if there are no questions, motion to reserve the fund, sorry, motion to approve the Reserve Fund Plan for June 30, 2025. Moved by Susan. Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor? Next up, we have an approval of a grant agreement with Monroe County for food waste reduction, part of our overall focus on sustainability. Dr. McGowan, do you want to mention anything about that?
Very briefly, we've been partners with Impact Earth for quite some time. We continue to be. They're really wonderful people, the Great Brighton Family, by the way, pioneered this work in Monroe County. This grant was available throughout the county. Many school districts will now be able to replicate programs we've had here for quite some time. It will help us continue to support that program and expand upon it, so we're grateful to the county for providing that type of funding also.
Questions from the board. Motion to approve the grant agreement with Monroe County for food waste reduction. Moved by Karen. Seconded by Esther. All those in favor? Next up, we have the approval of tentative agreements for successor labor contracts. I'll let Dr. McGowan speak about that briefly.
We have really collaborative relationships with each one of our bargaining units, and these contracts are always a source of pride and satisfaction for us relative to making sure we're supporting people that do really incredible work here, that we do so fairly, that we do so equitably, and that we continue to recognize performance with compensation, understanding we're people business, we should be investing in people, and we do our very best to make sure that that's done well in this district. And these agreements, we believe, all reflect that, while being responsible to the needs of our community and taxpayers as well.
Any questions with regards to these labor contracts? Motion to approve these agreements. Moved by Carrie Lynn, I think. Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor? Next up, we have our reports. First up, as always, we have a few financial reports in the agenda. Does anyone, everyone should have had the chance to review these reports. Are there any questions? As you all know, we have to approve these separately. Motion to approve the financial reports as presented in tonight's agenda. Moved by Esther. Seconded by Sue. All those in favor? Next up, we have our student representative, who I believe may have signed recently a letter of intent with UNC Chapel Hill as part of her athletic prowess, but she'll tell us more about that before she gets started.
Yeah, it took place on the signing day on June 5 and signed my letter of intent to play defense at the college level.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So for academics, AP exams and the makeup exams have concluded already. At Brighton High School, SAT/ACT Boot Camp took place May 27 through May 29. The geometry regions will be held tomorrow, 8 to 11, at the Brighton High School gym, along with the other regions starting after June 16. And then the last day of classes for high school is also June 16. For sports, all the spring sports sectionals has ended with a couple athletes going to state soon. Many sports sent seniors to the Monroe County Exceptional Senior Games. They sent about two to three seniors to play with a bunch of other seniors across Monroe County. And then, like we were saying before, 23 Brighton athletes celebrated their signing day, committing to continue their sports at the collegiate level on June 5. For clubs, acapella groups performed at the "Ach Apocalypse," which highlighted each vocal performing group at a fun concert. BHS students competed at the Regional Enviro-Thron, having a winning team in the wildlife station. Also, the Yearbook Club received the 2024 to 2025 yearbooks and started handing them out on May 29, and they're still handing them out. Fashion Club held its second annual fashion show on June 6, which featured a bunch of Brighton designers. And Brighton Rowing Club participated in a Learn to Row event on June 7, which was a fun social event, providing introductory lessons to rowing at all ages. For executive council, we held Spring Fest on May 23, which is one of our biggest events of the year. It's a big festival that takes up half the day. Clubs have the opportunity to promote their club and sell items to help fund it. Faculty participated in a talent show, and then classes voted for next year's class council. Also, new this year, the class of 2026 held a Pie in the Face fundraiser challenge where people participated in a raffle and were picked to pie in the face their favorite teachers. Other than that, the Brighton Clean Sweep took place May 17, where participants went all around the Brighton School community cleaning up and picking up trash. Senior Bash took place May 19, which was a memorable event for seniors, where they had many activities and received their senior gifts. Senior Decision Day took place May 22, where seniors wore outfits matching their post-secondary choices and celebrated that in the atrium. Senior Beginning Band, which is a tradition at Brighton Bands, where students swap instruments with each other and learn how to play a new instrument. They had their concert May 29. Brighton Jazz Band, Synthonic Band, and Wind Ensemble held its end-of-year concert and senior recognition ceremony on June 3. And Brighton held a student-as-creator performance, which showcased Brighton High School writers, directors, actors, and technicians on June 9. Also, I wanted to introduce Samantha Puckey. She's going to be the new Board of Education representative, and I'm really excited to see what she does.
Hi, I'm Samantha Puckey, and I'm excited to be the representative for next year.
Just a warning, we don't have refreshments before every meeting, so don't, just want to note that. Thank you very much, Samantha, for taking on that responsibility. And Daggy, thank you for the work you did this year, reporting on behalf of the school, and we wish you enormous success as you go off onto your next steps. So again, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Board of Education. We'll start with Labor Relations or District Operations, as it's now called. We had our last meeting back in May, so there's nothing really to report on in that regard. It was a good year, had a lot of different things go on, and I will say that one of our last Labor Relations, District Operations meetings was reviewing the new voting machines that were used for the May elections and got very positive feedback on that. So that's it for District Ops. Information Exchange?
I believe our last meeting was in the beginning of May, so we have nothing to report.
And Legislative?
Yeah, guess who did still meet in June? It was Legislative.
It was Legislative, go figure. We were able to have a follow-up conversations, a conversation with our Regents, Regent Hale and Regent Norwood. They're always inspiring. We talked about universal meals. We talked about teacher training at length. Regent Hale belongs to the P-20 Work Group, and he talked about attracting teachers, recruiting teachers, preparing teachers of the future, especially in relation to some of the new assessment models upcoming with the Blue Ribbon Commission's work, some of the changes in graduation requirements. What he didn't talk about, and I wanted to hear, was about reciprocity with other states and credentialing, because that is, that's an issue that we talk about, that sort of stubbornly in Albany folks refuse to have the conversation. So that's something I would like to hear more about in the future. He did have a quote I wrote down, "The big ugly is uglier than ever this year," which, I don't know, was a little ominous to me, but there you go.
I wasn't here at the last meeting. Did we announce your new leadership position?
We didn't, do we have to?
Would you, yes, we do.
Okay. So I'm very pleased I'll be the vice president, I am the vice president-elect of Monroe County School Board Association next year. I'm looking forward to doing more work with them. I'll likely continue my work with the Legislative Committee, so if you weren't bored by my updates before, just get ready.
It is a great honor and a great responsibility, so thank you for taking it on, as well as all the other things you're doing within our community. So much appreciated. BOSI's. I had a quick update from Mark. There's 14 different graduation ceremonies across all the BOSI's campuses. We'll obviously have some kids involved in those, and they're going through a lot of the things we are, some policy reviews and some other things. And I think it was announced at the first May meeting that Dan White is retiring, and they have hired his replacement. That name escapes me, I haven't got in front of me.
Kathy Hallmer.
Kathy Hallmer, thank you very much. So they're in great shape, and as always, we are grateful for Mark's role in representing us in the greater Monroe County with BOSI's. That's a huge, important partner for us in all the things we do here. So grateful there. Other board member reports, I'll start at the end. Carrie Lynn, with anything else anybody wants to follow up with?
Nothing in an official capacity, but just in the last month, been attending sectional games and concerts and band, and just a huge thanks to all of the teachers and staff that put all that together and all the hard work from the kids. It was, it's pretty incredible to attend, so thank you.
No new reports since the last meeting, so thank you very much.
Nothing official to report. I'm going to piggyback off of what Carrie Lynn said. I've had the opportunity to attend so many events, in particular, the Spring Vocal Concert, which was last week. It was just a wonderful evening of song and joy, and could not be prouder of our students and our staff for putting on such a wonderful performance. And it was my last official concert to attend, having a child in the school district, so, no, I'm not going to cry, no.
We met as the Audit Committee last week, as Larry mentioned. I agreed to make the report for that. I wrote something down because I really thought it was remarkable. How do you pronounce Jim's last name? Buffoon?
It'll come to me in a minute.
Jim from EFPR, they do our internal audit, our risk assessments. And what he said to us, I wrote it down in quotation marks, "This is an entirely clean report." And I think that that's truly remarkable, and I spoke about my compliments to Lou earlier, but I will heap upon them that is entirely due to Lou and his team and the stability they have in that particular department. And, you know, I've sat through those meetings for a number of years now. There's always something in an audit. Sometimes you hope, like, that's what, that's an auditor's job, but that entirely clean report really stood out to me. And those reports are posted online, the community can look at them. But that's just so reassuring to me to hear.
I'll echo that. Dahlia in particular, who runs those meetings for us and gets all the reports organized and files the appropriate things. It's nice to hear from auditors that what we are reporting on is boring. It's probably about the best report you can get. I agree.
It is. And also, at that meeting, we did discuss the reserve report that we approved just a few minutes ago and discussed what that would look like for this year. So thanks so much.
We had the opportunity as a group, I think it slipped a lot of our minds, but we as a, as a board, met with the Student Senate, and so we had a chance to meet right here at Brighton High School with elected leadership from the student body. And they were able to submit some very thoughtful questions to the board on a variety of topics, ranging from like board service and what that looks like, and how individual board members sort of balance governance and then the rest of their lives as volunteers, to cellphone policy. And it was extremely thoughtful, two-way conversation, and it was really valuable for all of us. Additionally, just this morning, we had a meeting of the Mental Health Program Evaluation Team that is expertly led by Deanna Spagnola. And, you know, unlike other like curriculum evaluations, you know, evaluating mental health across the district is a very long and depth process. And so we continue to dive into survey data and really look at mental health K through 5, 6 through 12, and then among our faculty, teachers, and staff. And we had a real strong working session today, and the plan is to do some more small groups, sort of diving even deeper over the summer. So those are my reports.
Thank you.
So I also attended my last band concert as a parent, which was also emotional and amazing. And there are a number of seniors who are leaving Wind Ensemble, so if anybody has a band kid, have them practice this summer to replace our children, our seniors. I had our last New York State School Board Association DEI Committee meeting last week, and we discussed resolutions to the State Ed Department are due from school boards. If there are resolutions that school boards around the state want to submit, and then we will review them this summer, and there will be a long meeting where we, there are recommendations that go to the school board, I mean, that go to the New York State Ed Department. And I'm grateful to be part of that process, and Karen has been part of that process, so.
Somebody needs to leave in October, so prepare yourself. We'll talk about that later.
All right. Okay. All right. So that's it. Thanks.
And I think a couple of you had last proms, too. I think I saw pictures from a few of you from last prom, so congratulations and condolences on that. Congrats. I'll just quickly do construction, and as you would all suspect, in about a week or two, there's going to be a ton of stuff start happening in schools. The window to work in schools, sort of unobstructive, is about two months long, so, you know, engines are started and dumpsters are loaded and everything's ready to get going. So in a week or two, all four schools will have a lot of activity straight for two months, and we'll get updates on that over the summer from Lou and John DeValley and those folks. Suffice to say, we're in different phases in each of the schools on projects. And as we like to talk about, there's stuff on this side of the wall that you can see, and then there's a bunch of stuff behind the wall having to do with HVAC and things like that that are also being worked. So a ton of work planned for the summer. We had a good discussion about work in a few of the schools yesterday, so look for a lot of activity. And I think that is it. I did note here, we're going to go to Nicole and the BTA. Dr. Dan, I didn't put PTSA on here, so I apologize. You're going to go after her, okay? So we'll put you right in there after BTA. But Nicole, I'm going to have you, go ahead. I'll also note, as a board, almost all of us had the chance to be at the BTA event last week and celebrate some people, which was a ton of fun. It's a great collaboration. The board's always excited to be invited there. We appreciate the superintendent and the BTA inviting us in to sort of be part of that celebration. It's a great event. So on behalf of the board, thank you all very much for allowing us to be there.
Thank you for being there.
So at Council Rock, Mrs. Lyons' second-grade class did a little bit of an extension on their Good Eating Module and took their own snacks, smudged those snacks, and then figured out how much fat was in each of the snacks. So a nice little extension. Extended Studies, kindergartners have been using the habits of mind to create stories about fairies. They use loose parts, fairy stick puppets, a door that they designed in Seesaw, and an illustration of a place a fairy might like to visit. They figured out how to tell stories and come up with problems that their fairies faced and how to solve them. In Extended Studies 1st Grade, the cluster groups worked on a fictional narrative structure to tell stories about a character visiting Van Gogh's Starry Night. They created a story about themselves visiting another Van Gogh painting. And all the stories will be made into a library book with a barcode so that the kids can check it out. And 2nd Grade Extended Studies, the 2nd graders are using the Friendship Garden to help inspire them for their Frank Lloyd White-style windows that they make as part of an extension. At French Road, in 5th Grade Health Class, students are creating personalized self-care plans based on a self-assessment survey they completed in the fall and the spring. They'll reflect on the self-care habits and choose one they'd like to improve in using the habit of mind that will help them achieve that goal. It's a new tradition, they started this past fall, where each student will receive a reminder email from Miss Mix when they enter 6th Grade, encouraging them to revisit the plan that they visited in 5th Grade and have them assess how they're doing. In Mrs. Stachili's 4th Grade Class, students had a great camping day. They read Hatchet by Gary Paulson and learned about how to survive in mountainous environments. They wrote their own survival stories, invited families to come in to hear their writing. They also created, I'm sorry, completed a STEM challenge where they had to create a tent that was windproof, waterproof. Then they got to make smores, made friendship bracelets, and had flashlight reading. So you can see them having a fantastic time there. The FRES art teachers, Mallory Gregor and Amanda Tobia, organized and made the first-ever grade-level art shows at FRES. They wrapped up with the 5th Grade Show in the Gymnasium during the ice cream social in May. They were really proud of the creativity that had paintings, drawings, paper structures, clay tiles, and the ability to have the kids show that off to their families. And then Mr. Hurley submitted probably, I don't know, about 25 pictures of this amazing event, where the French Road Early Morning Reading Program had therapy dogs for the Read to the Dogs event. They collaborated with Rock Dogs and Mrs. Brightfield and Mrs. Webster to bring five dogs to French Road. They read, sat with, and enjoyed the, having the dogs to read to. They wanted to make sure to thank Rock Dogs, Mrs. Coggins, and Mrs. Wheeler for allowing the event to happen. Amazing dogs. And then at TCMS, at TCMS, students in Mrs. Elkins' Aspire Class and the Green Thumb Club, led by Mr. Elkins, worked on a citizen science project through Tomatoesphere to track the germination rates of tomato seeds that had been sent to space and then compare them to seeds that stayed here on Earth. They didn't know which seeds were which, and what they did was they tracked the data daily and submitted that data after three weeks to the Tomatoesphere. The Earth seeds actually had a lesser germination rate than the space seeds. They, they take this data and combine it, use it, send it to other schools across the USA and Canada to continue to study the effect of space on seeds. In Mrs. Cunningham's 7th Grade Science Class, they used a driving question board to explore energy efficiency within a home. The student questions guided the direction of the learning, and new concepts emerged. They collected all of their learning and kept adding it to their vocabulary chart. In May, the 7th and 8th Grade German Students went on their German trip to Vermont. They went to Ben &amp; Jerry's, they went to the Trap Lodge, they learned the history of the Von Trapp's departure from Austria, they learned about maple syrup production, went to the Sugar Shack, there's a lot of sugar here, simulated Rhine cruise on Lake Champlain, learned about Scottish Highland cattle and Vermont teddy bears, and explored Burlington, and had more smores. Mrs. Lou's 6th Grade Students created poetry books, and they did a silent poetry slam where they shared compliments and critiques, using really kind and specific feedback. The 1214 worked on several cooking food-related activities. They made apple crumbles, pigs in a blanket, as they were learning about the United States and their ticket around the world unit. They also had bubble tea and then collected data about their favorite desserts. Students enjoying all of that. Mrs. Mantel and Mrs. Hendrick's Math 8 Students did an experiment to explore a linear relationship by testing how bridge thickness related to strength. They displayed their data in a table and graph and looked for relationships to use. In Frau Geiger's Class, students took the National German Exam. The photograph is of the freshman class, 20 students in the 9th Grade, 17 of them scored very high and received a medal. And then 80 students participated in the National German Exam. Katie Seymour was recommended for the Student Society Scholarship with a score of 99%. And there's a list of all the students and their scores. The Teen Institute Club is running a mental, sorry, at the high school also, the Teen Institute Club is running a mental health campaign through May on meditative painting. They brought in a psychiatrist to talk about self-care, positive mindset, more food, a waffle party. They planned this around AP exams to encourage connection and talk about managing stress. And in 12th Grade Law and Government, the Guest Speaker Series, they had new presenters, Deb Leach, who's Monroe County Health Department Community Outreach Director for Addiction, Nate Salzman, who's a Brighton Town Board Member and a Brighton alumna, Clark Zimmerman, a Brighton resident and defense attorney, Meg Jones, Brighton resident and a current member of the Attorney General's Office, and Bill Mealy, the Brighton Supervisor. Congratulations to the students who won the seal of biliteracy, including Joy, who's here. And it was Ziheng, I say, Aram, all won the bilateracy, and Aram and Joy had the triliteracy. The languages were Mandarin Chinese, Turkish, Portuguese, English, and Spanish. The Latino Student Union and Dance Club co-hosted a bachata workshop after school and taught students the basics of the Latin dance style. And on a personal note, it's my last board meeting with you guys. I'm not the BTA rep next, next cycle. It's been a real pleasure and a real honor to be able to share all the amazing things that happen in our schools. Thank you.
It's not lost on us how much time it takes for you to collect all the information, and you have a lot of willing partners sending it to you, I realize that. But to put it all together, and as we always tell you, your pictures are awesome, or the pictures you provided are awesome. And, you know, as the saying goes, worth a thousand words. So, excuse me, thank you so much for all the work you did, it's greatly appreciated. Dr. Castillo, PTSA.
Good evening. I'm pleased to share some highlights from the PTSA. At Council Rock, students were visited by author Alicia Kleppis, who taught students about their research and writing process from the idea phase all the way to the finished product. Staff gatherings included a festive Fiesta-themed meeting on May 19th and a Western-themed staff appreciation luncheon on May 23rd. The 2nd Grade Class participated in the crossover bingo event at French Road Elementary School on June 5th. Yearbooks have been submitted for printing, thanks to the efforts of Melissa Hansen, Alyssa, Allison Wendorf. And congratulations to Kelsey Dunning and Tara Keller, who will serve as the 2025-2026 PTSA Building Chairs for Council Rock. At FRES, there were several ice cream socials in May, with the 3rd, 4th, and 5th Grade Classes celebrating their ice cream socials on May 1st, 7th, and 8th. Bedtime Stories with the Principals was held on May 7th, and there was a staff appreciation lunch that was held on May 23rd. The 5th Grade Classes set to participate in that activity night on May 30th, featuring several activities, including a DJ, scavenger hunt, basketball, air hockey, and board games. And the FRES Field Day is scheduled for June 4th. The 7th Grade Class celebrated with a Neon-themed activity night on May 16th. There is a crossover night for the 5th graders on May 30th, and on June 4th, they held their meeting with the principal. Athletic Director Mark Press joined them for a discussion focusing on TCMS athletics and school trips. The PTSA provided snacks for the staff meeting at Brighton High School on May 19th, and there was a meeting with the principal on May 21st. Spring Fest was held on May 23rd, which needed to be moved inside due to the weather. The Senior Bash was held on May 22nd, celebrating the class of 2025. The Special Education Monthly Meetings are scheduled for June 12th, alternating between in-person and Zoom formats. The DEI Committee provided funds to the TCMS Black Student Union, so they can buy decorations and pizzas to celebrate Juneteenth. I have a special announcement to finish tonight's report. The PTSA would like to congratulate Sarah Stabel for receiving the PTSA Lifetime Membership Award. to congratulate Sarah Stabel for receiving the PTSA Lifetime Membership Award. Sarah, thank you for all you do for our students and community, and thank you, Nicole, it's been great to serve with you this year.
Thank you very much. Dr. McGowan.
I'm just going to pick up right where you left off, the PTSA is so helpful all year long with so many events, so thank you as always for all the support. And Nicole, you have been absolutely wonderful, and you make the wonderful things that happen in our classrooms come alive, so thank you for just great reports for these many years. It's been a pleasure, it really has been. A few very quick items from me. On the 16th, of course, we have the tour through the buildings for seniors, the bus tour, which should be amazing, looking forward to graduation. Will be on the 24th. I'm sorry, the 16th is the last day of school, the last day of classes, the 23rd is the bus tour, the 24th is graduation, and the 25th is the rain date that we won't need. But Dr. Hall will communicate very clearly, we'll be sending out information about how that works on those two days, just want to make sure people have those things in our calendars. Really looking forward to wishing great luck to our kids graduating, and I know a couple of you on the stage will have a very special opportunity to give a send-off as well, and you should be very, very proud of your wonderful kids. That's all I have, thank you.
Great. Next up, we have the approval of some first-read policies. There's four of them, but there's one that is near and dear to all our hearts that Dr. McGowan will also talk about, and I'm going to read all four of them first. Policy 5695, non-instructional business operations, students and personal electronic devices. Policy 5681, non-instructional business operations, school safety plans. Policy 7220, students' graduation requirements, and Policy 7223, students' advanced coursework. With the understanding that we'll be talking more about the state and what we're doing in that regards, I offer these up for approval. Any questions or concerns? Motion to approve the four policies as read.
Absolutely.
Moved by Karen? Seconded by Eleanor, all those in favor? I'll defer now to you, Dr. McGowan, there's a lot going on with the personal electronic devices.
Hold on, I gotta finish the text, hold on. Oh, I'm just kidding, that's my lame attempt at some humor on this. But that kind of gets at some of the point. First of all, let me be very clear, because this presentation will, and not that everybody's going to be viewing this at home, but will be used, I think, for other reasons and for people to take a look and go back and understand kind of where we're coming from. And make a couple of points, this is not, we're not taking a position on this as good or bad or promoting the policy as something that, you know, we were driven intrinsically to do this ourselves. We may have been, right? There's a lot of research around how important this is, and we're embracing it as a step forward for public health, for kids, et cetera. But it shouldn't be misinterpreted when I say those things as this came out of nowhere from us, right? This is something that we are reacting to, right, wrong, or indifferent from the state of New York. Let's not blame them, just would like people to understand that our normal process of engaging people in pretty extensive discussions around significant issues like this was not something that was possible. We really were required by the state to approach this work this way, and that's kind of the background to it, right? So, new education law passed with the budget, 2803, and the point was it was aimed to reduce distractions, support student well-being, and ensure emergency readiness, all of which following a lot of research that we're seeing about the use of technology, the impact on brain development, and the types of things we know become a distraction in school and the difficulties that we have. It addresses internet-enabled devices, so phones, smartwatches, tablets, everything, the whole nine yards, it's anything internet-enabled in school. And the key definitions, again, in the document, in the law itself, are how do you define internet-enabled devices, smartphones, tablets, smartwatches, laptops from home, any outside devices. School day is mentioned specifically in the law, and that means from arrival to dismissal. That includes lunch, passing time, flex time, et cetera. Basically, if you're here, and it's called bell-to-bell, but we're not going to get caught up in the layers of this, if you're here in this school building as a student, right, on campus during the school day, you should not and cannot be using any internet-enabled device. I'll talk to you a little bit about what that means after school, but this is school day. So when you show up until the end of the day, when you leave, at the end of the day, it is not allowed. I know there will be people that say, well, it's before class started. No, 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 it's when you walk into this building as a student to begin the day, in the middle school and Council Rock and French Road for that matter, too. And school grounds is any district facility, property, et cetera, so outside, on the field, tennis courts, you name it, if you're on the property, it includes that. It does not include when kids during the school day leave us to go off campus. That is not where it covers, we're not policing people off of the campus. And one of the key pieces to this was to think about athletic events, but field trips also, that is during the school day. And it's interesting because you are technically still part of school even when you are off campus, so we had to kind of parse that out a little bit and come to some conclusions on what that means and where we landed, which I'll describe to you. Excuse me, our process. So good that it's no longer up on the screen. This is somehow like some kind of real poetic justice here, I think some people are probably thinking about.
Even if we're not able to get the PowerPoint back up and running, Dr. McGowan, it will be posted online after the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'll walk you through it, but yes, the material itself will be posted online, and the board's been provided that as well. All right, so process-wise, important to point out, because as the state adopted this as a law, they also pretty much prescribed then what you, what you needed to do in terms of engaging stakeholders and coming to some definitions. So, our process was to first review the law as provided by the state, request and receive some legal review from District Council as well, develop a draft policy, and form a committee. And draft policy and then form a committee is an important distinction, because the committee needed to review the draft policy that I'm recommending to you. The committee was not formed to explore defiance of the law, was not formed to develop a policy from scratch, because the law pretty much said, this is what has to be in your policy. So again, a little bit of a departure from how we normally collaborate with groups, but not given a choice, right? That was the legal requirement. So we gathered feedback from that group and then, of course, updated the policy that was provided to us and revised it based on the feedback from each person. So the first consideration in the draft policy was athletic contests, and we had to ask the question, should it include athletic contests? The broad consensus feedback from the group was that it should not be included. Athletic contests, extracurriculars should not be included in that. Thanks, Dan, I see that popping up as well, so I'll head back over there. So we were basically trying to work through this idea, and the decision was that athletics would not be included. So in other words, a student stays after school, they're sitting up in the bleachers watching a game, can they be on their phone? The answer is yes. Internet-enabled devices could be used at that point, and the feeling was that students still need them for logistics, contacting their parents, safety to have that with them after school when unsupervised, and the recommendation was then to exclude athletic contests from the policy. Field trips, should include field trips was the question. The group was, and it was a large arts committee, again, of parents, students, staff members opposed to a blanket ban, felt that there should be some case-by-case discretion for that. So there could be opportunities on particular field trips, and again, we have different kinds of trips, it's important to remember in this. You have overnight trips away from school, far away from family, you have day trips where technology in your hand might actually be useful in that trip. Like I could imagine particular tours and experiences where having your phone with you to be able to follow something might not be a bad idea, but we wanted to leave that up to teacher-by-teacher discussion, trip-by-trip, to make that decision based on safety, logistics, et cetera, and the duration, so we'll allow that. Now, this brings an important point up. This will be to find a real technical term messy, and messy in the sense that we have to figure out how each of these pieces gets implemented and be very clear on that with students. As always is the case, the board is acting on a broad policy that says these are the general decisions that have been made, now it's up to school leadership administrators in the building to define the regulation for that, the specific rules, right? And that will be nested in the Code of Conduct, that will be nested in specific rules, we'll communicate about each of these pieces and how that gets administered. Third consideration was exemptions. So there are permitted exemptions, and they are for health emergency or perhaps translation uses. There were concerns among the committee over subjectivity, potential inconsistency, the administrative burden of figuring out how that would work, so we want to make sure we just simply clarify that language, which we did in the policy that we recommended to you, and define those terms very carefully. So for example, there are devices that are used for people to monitor their blood sugar. Well, there should be an exemption for that. There are particular reasons from a 504 plan case or an IEP plan that they would be required and permitted. Again, in that messiness, we have to figure out what does that note look like, what kind of doctor is acceptable, how do we follow up on those? But we deal with these kinds of things every day with regard to exemptions for a lot of different things, but we just have to apply that to this and think carefully about how that could work. The fourth consideration was parent communication. The law required, as there are concerns about safety, communication alternatives for people who previously were able to contact their child during the day by phone, so we want to make sure there's support for multiple channels, whether that's calling the office, being able to email your child during the day, be able to send a parent square message to school, there's not the ability to contact students directly that way, but school to then get ahold of the child. We want to make sure we're giving people a space that is secure, that is private to have that conversation. Reminds me, we are currently doing this. So remember, the only issue actually for us in school is nine through 12. And I keep talking about this building, there's a reason in terms of how our mindset works on this. This is already happening, and it's really important to look at the example of middle school that has implemented this so effectively over the last several years. Kids just know this already, right? And the school works through that, phones are stored in lockers, it works pretty seamlessly, and 25% of the kids, this is mine, don't worry, Dr. Hall, 25% of the kids will have been well-trained by Dr. Edmonds when they come here to this building, and it should work pretty well that way. But currently, kids contact their parent through the school office, or their parent can contact them as well. Fifth consideration was around other personal devices, you know, fitness trackers, smartwatches, any other devices coming in. So we know that there are kids that do bring in their own iPad, laptop, tablet, et cetera. The committee talked about need for clarity, consistency, and enforceability, we wanted to make sure we're discouraging all personal devices. There is the opportunity, and what the consideration was for the committee was, do you allow devices to come in and have some type of system for the district to register those devices? And really, it was determined that it would be not manageable for one, not equitable for another, to have a system set up like that, that we felt like the school technology, the provided devices, we could handle an increase in that network traffic and the use of those devices for some kids who currently bring their own, we'd be able to accommodate that, and that it just would be impossible to implement this with fidelity and allow personal devices to come in, in some type of system. The sixth consideration was the events outside of the school day. So these were extracurricular events, so outside of just athletic events, a specific conversation was had about non-school day events, and same issue with athletic contests. The idea was, we shouldn't have a blanket policy, there should be staff discretion, so clubs, activities, et cetera, that those could be allowed. And then in terms of the prohibition exemption, again, very clear, not on the school day, not on school grounds, exemptions for IEP 504 plans, this is just to summarize each of these pieces, emergencies, health need, translation, teacher-approved educational use with administrative approval. So there may be the rare occasion, we'll have to set up a system for this, again, figuring out the rules for it, where a teacher might be conducting an activity where they want the student actually to bring their phone for a specific reason, and that would have to be with administrative approval. That's a very rare occasion, so this is not the, okay, great, classroom by classroom, now some people allowed, some people don't, no. This is to allow for the idea that if there's a particular activity that this makes sense for, I could see, for example, a health class saying to the principal, we'd like all the kids to bring it in so they can download a fitness tracker, a calorie counter, some other type of health app, and work through what it means with them, but to do that, they need to bring them in so we can kind of explore that a little bit together. That to me is very reasonable, educationally sound, those kinds of situations we would want to honor as well. We want to make sure we're really focused on this issue again by way of summary, how parents can contact their child and how they get ahold of them, and we will annually publish that to the community that was required as well. Device storage is an interesting question. We will not be purchasing pouches, we have lockers, everybody has a locker, there will be room for everybody to have a locker, we know they're not used as often in this building. Great journey back to the use of a locker, this would be the place where it will go. At the elementary school, we're going to discourage people to bring devices, and we always have at the K through 5 level, at all, bringing devices, but they have to be stored in backpacks, lockers. We're also exploring, do you have a storage system if that's not secure, where you could have pouches inside the classroom, not pouches, individual pouches, but for example, like shoe holders that you put on the back of your door, that type of scenario at the elementary level, because they are in the same space all day, right, your elementary kids? As opposed to at the secondary level where that would go classroom to classroom, defeat the purpose of not having it with you during the school day. Ultimately, though, we're encouraging people, don't send it K through 5, there's no need for that. Middle and high school stored in lockers, again, similar to the example that's been set by the middle school, we'll do that at the secondary level, at the, at the high school level as well. Making very clear to people, we're not responsible for lost or damaged devices, one way to prevent all of that is don't bring them at all. We'll work on, we've got some themes to work through around enforcement and feedback. Administrative staff is largely responsible for ultimately enforcing that, although we'll work with all staff on how to support that work in the building. Confiscated devices may become necessary if somebody's a multiple offender of having their phone with them, or how they would be held in the office until the end of the school day. And the committee, it should be pointed out, broadly supported the law's intent, and just really pointed out to us through a thought exchange, some information collected at the end, be clear, be consistent, and have reasonable expectations for enforcement in particular. So the next steps from here, you did the first read tonight, approved the first read of each of those policies, including this one, we'll do a second read on July 2nd. We have this thought exchange data from the committee around what should we be thinking about, what are your suggestions? That will continue to be reviewed. Implementation planning is really already underway, so this is not a new topic. In fact, for months, as this was debated and discussed as part of the budget process, our leaders were really thinking about how would they implement this if this does end up coming to fruition. So that planning is happening. We'll do student and family communication further in July after your second read of the policy, and then Code of Conduct revisions that will result from this particular action difficulty that might come up would be adopted by the board at their August meeting as part of the Code of Conduct revision and updates that we do annually. And then we will have an information campaign as school begins, I'm guessing probably even before that, as these things are all sorted out later in July and into August. Any questions for me about the policy as you've had a first read?
I'd like to think a year from now, 11 months from now, we'll have a year under our ballot, and we can say, here's what worked, here's what didn't. Is there an expectation at the state level, certainly at the local level, that we go, okay, what did we just learn and how can we be better so for the 26, 27 year, we can be that much better? So I just don't know if we've got a process in mind at a local level or from a legislative standpoint at a state level.
Yeah, I'm waiting for that discussion on the property tax cap that was initiated about 15 years ago now, but I, I think that if I'm just being candid, honest, without really being sarcastic, honestly, I don't see there being much on the state level that gets reviewed anytime soon, because it was something they pushed over the finish line, got it done, and I think we'll, we'll be unlikely to revisit the parameters of the law anytime soon. I do think, though, for us, yes, we will get our committee back together a year from now, to your point, and like most things, I think we do better when we think about just the local control of it, and look back at each of these items, say, what, what did work, what didn't work, and make adjustments from there. We will, though, next spring, in the budget process, I don't want to just sound like that's something we've given up on, push hard on, these are changes we'd like you to make in the law that might make more sense, that might be more practical. I just, I don't think it's likely that they will. I think once it's done, the legislature will likely, and the governor will want to move away from it as fast as possible and say, you know, good luck, now it's yours, figure it out, but certainly we would look to influence that if it's at all possible.
I think I concur completely from Monroe County School Boards Association, we do have a paper on this, and we will continue, much like the Council of Superintendents, to advocate for revisions that would restore local control. I don't have a lot of hope for that, à la tax cap, but we'll continue to do our best.
Right, thank you. Right, thank you, and you have, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have the consent agenda. I'm sorry, are there any other comments or questions with regards to the electronics and cell phone policy? Yeah, I agree. Next up, we do have the consent agenda, we have approval of personnel changes, approval of the committee on special ed report, the approval of the committee on preschool special ed report, we've got, excuse me, one field trip approval, New York State Future Business Leaders of America, thank you, Dr. Hall, national conference in California in a couple of weeks, one fundraising activity with the chess club at the BHS library, a chess tournament and lunch on June 12th, and then finally, as our practice, we'll read out the gifts, we have a gift in the amount of $600 to the Dennis Miller Scholarship Fund to the Brighton Central School District's Visual and Performing Arts Department. With that, that's what I have for the consent agenda, any questions or comments with regards to the consent agenda? Motion to approve? Moved by Carrie Lynn?
Seconded.
Seconded by Esther, all those in favor? Prior to adjourning, Eleanor, thank you so much for your service over the past three years to this community, to the kids in this community, to the staff in this community. I know this was a labor of love for you, because you have a lot of work experience in education, I think you're going to celebrate by driving across the country with your family in the camper, like sort of a vacation thing, but wanted to take a minute to say...
I am indeed.
Yeah, wanted to take a minute and say thank you for all your hard work over these years.
Do I get 30 seconds?
Yeah.
I just wanted to say thank you, thank you to everyone that is in this room today for all of that you do for Brighton. I went to school here from kindergarten, from first grade through senior year, moved back here specifically so my children could do the same. It has been an honor, and I thank the community of Brighton for electing me into this position for three years, and it's been a privilege to sit up here with these people, as well as Julene, who is not here today, but got to serve a year with her as well, and so, thank you, keep up the good work, and I am not going to be forgotten, so don't worry, I will turn up again, somewhere, somehow.
Good.
But thank you.
Yes, thank you again. Also, one is, always, a little bit more work to do tonight for our video team, so Dollar Bill Moyer, of course, the triliteracy award winner, Joy, so congrats on that, very well done. Mike Paxton, and then we have our two theater techs with us, Jack Whitmer and Hudson Sloan, so you guys in back, thank you very much back there. And as always, to Kim and Dan and everybody who helped to get this whole setup done, so we could appropriately honor our tenured recipients. With that, any more comments or questions from the board? Dr. McGowan?
No, thanks for a wonderful evening, and thanks Eleanor for all your service, both PTSA prior and here at this table, too, we appreciate you.
With that, I offer a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor.
Seconded.
Seconded by Karen, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.